Is that good? Oh, yeah. Okay. Sixty, okay, sixty million dollars to buy those peanuts. It's enough.
Mass, you don't expect nothing.
I want to welcome everybody here. This is an all-important topic for all of us. So, thanks for coming. It's very difficult to get this many people in Lake County room together at the same time. So, we appreciate your times. I want to thank Mayor Hallam in Willoughby Hills for hosting. It was difficult to find a room because you possibly do a table to sit at and take some things like that. So, again, thanks for coming. Thanks for Senators Marino and Representatives Troy to join us today. I hope it's going to be Commissioner Beveridge to show he's put a lot into this. So, I'm going to turn it over to him and hope to get a lot out of today. Thank you.
Well, that's a fair amount of pressure for the day. But I also wanted to echo Commissioner Duggan's comments. I just want to say thank you to all of you guys for being here. Because I understand it, this group of folks probably doesn't get together all the time, except for fortunately, the local pandemic has happened. And when I started getting, when I hit the ground in January 3rd, started having some of these conversations, and I realized it might be helpful for us to bring all of us together at different times to be able to discuss important issues. Some may relate to others, some may not, but I think it's important to try and take that opportunity. With that said, I'm going to also throw out right now, we're going to go through some stuff, go through some stuff today, but then we are also going to have another one of these meetings planned for January 26th of 2026. That'll be on a Monday afternoon. I've already got confirmation that Paradigm there at Manner Schools is available, so we'll probably move the location there. No offense to the great folks here in Willoughby Hills, thank you guys very much for hosting us today. I just know some of my Madison and Harry Brubaker were a little salty they had to make the drive all the way to the west side of the county. So, we'll do our best. Mayors and managers, I think you guys had a meeting that day, which I believe is in Manner, so that's why we went to the center of the town. So, hopefully that's convenient, more details on that to follow, we'll talk about that later. At this time, I also wanted to recognize a couple, if I recognized every elected official in the room, we don't have time for that. I don't understand why. But I did want to take an opportunity to recognize a couple of the county officials that I saw coming in here today. So, Becky Lynch, our recorder from Lake County is here, thank you Becky for being here. And then Christopher Galloway, our auditors back there trying to, there you go, hi sweetheart. I want to thank those folks for being here, and I want to thank Auditor Galloway for his help on some of the numbers and the stuff that we've done today too. So, at this time, I want to recognize some of our state officials who have joined us today and make a couple remarks before we get into the program. First off, I want to have our State Senator Jerry Sereno come on, please. Thanks, Jerry.
Good afternoon, everybody. Great to be with you, Mayor, thanks for hosting. And I parked on the grass, so if you can make sure I don't get a ticket, I would appreciate that. So, I think it's great that you have all gathered, and I know you pulled together a lot of information that the Commissioners have asked you to over the last couple of weeks. As you can imagine, property tax issues are number one, are the number one issues that we're dealing with in Columbus. And I'm sure you heard some more about some of the specific activities that the House did last week. But I do want to share a couple thoughts with you, because the two bills, 186 and 335 that the House passed last week are now arriving in the Senate today, and we will be starting our hearings on those bills tomorrow. And I'm hopeful that, I don't know what the shakeout will be, because there's lots of elements in both bills that are going to impact property taxes. There have been some pretty broad estimates of what they would save, you know, all the way up to $2 billion to taxpayers. We'll see how the elements of the final bills that we end up passing and agreeing to at conference with the House, how they actually shake out. But I'm hopeful that we will see some serious action on these bills in addition to executing what we already passed in the budget back at the end of June. My Thanksgiving, that would be, that's my personal objective and the objective of many of my colleagues in the Senate. And so, you'll have some healthy discussion today. I have to leave unfortunately to go to another meeting, but I, and I'm going to be looking at the archive of this event to make sure I hear everybody's input and all the questions. But there's one thing, one message that I want to share with everybody here, and it's been written about a lot and talked about a lot, and that is the petition that's floating around to eliminate property taxes, or to declare them unconstitutional, basically. Very few things have happened in the state that have been as dangerous as that. I talk to people all the time, I go around to groups and I talk about that, because everybody's angry and frustrated about property taxes and increasing values. I get that, but we're all taxpayers, we've all seen increases depending, the amounts depend on where we happen to live. But replacing $22 billion a year in property taxes, that's the amount that we collect in the state. The state doesn't, we don't levy any property taxes. In fact, we pay part of the property taxes for everybody in this room and everybody in our county through a couple of different mechanisms. But just to declare, declare that it is unconstitutional to collect property taxes is irresponsible. If you look at your tax receipts from July that we all just paid, or we paid for you through your mortgage company, take a look at all the institutions, all the groups that are levying the value of our property, okay? It's not just the schools, that's the largest percentage for virtually every community. But we're talking about police levies, we're talking about libraries, senior citizens levies, in some cases, legal and community college, okay? The funding for those would all go away. All go away, and be replaced by what? A substantial increase in sales tax, a substantial increase in income tax rates in the state. It would be a massive shell game of taxing, we're giving you relief on property taxes only to tax you in several other areas. It's not tenable, it doesn't work, and I think it's an irresponsible proposal that they are floating around, and they're trying to trade on people's frustrations with property taxes. And I share those frustrations, and I hear them from everywhere around the county. But this, coming up with a solution such as that is not really a solution. It would affect everybody in this room and lots of others, nonprofit organizations, service organizations all around the county, certainly all around the state. So, I would certainly beg all of you to give that no weight at all, give it no support. In fact, tell 100 people that you know that it would be ridiculous to support that, that if it gets on the ballot, we're going to all have to work together to defeat it. And we'll see some strange bedfellows. The Ohio Education Association will actually be there with me, and they're usually not. But we all have something to lose, and our citizenry has a lot to lose if that irresponsible proposal were to get on the ballot and to, God forbid, actually be adopted on the ballot. It would cause major disarray for the state and for our Lake County community. So, I would ask that you pay attention to the two House bills. I assume Representative Troy will talk about them a little bit as well. Pay attention to those, again, they're just now getting the Senate. We will do some shake and bake on those elements of the bill, bill, both of the bills, and we'll see how they end up. But I think we're going to see clearly some very meaningful and substantial property tax relief by the time we finish our work, which hopefully will be done before we get to Thanksgiving. So, thank you for your time and attention, thanks for coming together. I think it's important that we act as a community on this, and that we make sure that we do the responsible thing, fiscally as well as morally responsible for the welfare of our citizens here in Lake County. Thank you very much.
At this time, I wanted to ask our State Representative from the western half, and I think Captain Mentor Dan Troy, would you like to pull up?
Thank you, Commissioner. Actually, I only have two hours scheduled for this thing, so to explain Ohio's property tax system, we need about two days. But, you know, let me just very briefly say what's going on. Obviously, we are aware of the need for property tax relief. When I came back to the legislature in early 2021, I said that property tax is a real looming disaster on the horizon, we need to do something. I tried to get a committee created my first term to study property taxation, because I've always said, there's only about two people in Ohio that understand Ohio's property tax system, and they probably disagree. And so, what we were able to do in the second term was get a Property Tax Study Commission that I wrote language in the budget, five senators, five representatives, to basically, first of all, educate ourselves as legislators as to how Ohio's property tax system works, how we got there, and what we needed to do going forward to, one, protect taxpayers from spikes that they were going to have difficulty paying, but at the same time, understanding that property taxes are the core of providing a lot of critical services that comprise what we call a civilized society. We know what they all are in Lake County, whether it's the Adams Ward, whether it's developmental disabilities in Deepwood, whether it's our senior levy Lakeland, children's services at our JFS department. So, you know, in the history of property taxes, that was the only tax that was out there. There were no municipal income taxes, there were no county piggyback sales taxes, that was what was dependent upon local governments. And when the bottom fell out in the depression in the 30s, the state created a three cent sales tax, that's the first time we had a sales tax. Two-thirds of that went into a local government relief fund, and that was distributed to county based on, based through the county budget commission based on the need that's there. So, there's been a long partnership between the state and local governments to help provide these services. I'm concerned about the deterioration. Yes, we have passed a property tax reform bills, I reluctantly supported them mainly when they became a lot better than when they were introduced. As I said on the floor, it's like a preamble of our constitution. These bills are not perfect, but they're hell a lot more perfect than the way they were introduced, because House Bill 335 was going to totally eliminate inside village when it was first introduced, to just basically kill inside village. House Bill 186, like a lot of the reliefers post, was basically promising tax relief to those school districts on the 20 mil floor, but taking that relief out of the school districts' anticipated revenues. And I've argued all along, I says, the state needs to continue the history of putting our own skin into the game and helping out on property tax relief. And what we've seen over the last four, five to six years is a tendency to cut the state income tax by taking top rates down, which basically benefits those in the higher incomes, and not doing anything with things like the homestead exemption and other things that really will help in property tax relief for our senior citizens and those really struggling on fixed incomes. In other words, targeted tax relief to those that need it the most, instead of the tax relief we've been passing, to those that need it the least. So, I think that, so what we're working on, 186 does not benefit every taxpayer in Ohio. 186 changes what was a configuration, basically made of what was called the 20 mil floor. The 20 mil floor is what school districts must, they have to show 20 mils of local effort in order to qualify for state foundation funding. And over the years, the legislature exempted things like emergency village, substitute levies from counting toward the 20 mil floor, so you had kind of a flawed configuration. You know, as I told Representative Thomas, who was pushing these bills, I said, you know, I don't know what the intent was, maybe it was conscious, maybe it was subconscious, this was maybe an easier way for the legislature to get more money to schools, but not at the legislature's expense, at the expense of property taxpayers in those local districts. So, we've kind of fixed that, but what initially was going to happen, it was going to cut school funding, $1.7 billion anticipated revenue. You know, the argument was, well, that's not revenue they're getting now, it's just revenue they thought they were going to get a couple, you know, starting next year, two more years down the road. I said, what about possible bargaining contracts, capital improvement programs, things like that, they have that anticipated revenue built into. So, basically, I said, it's time for the state to step up the plate and put some skin in the game, finally they did. So, what happened is approximately $380 million was put in the bill last week in Finance Committee that basically holds all of those school districts harmless for the first year, partially harmless for the second year, but I think we still have some work to do, and I think we should continue to fill that hole on 186. But again, if your school district, now Willoughby Eastlake was part of that 20 mil floor, I think Riverside was, I think Madison, Wickliffe's not, Manner's not, so there will be no tax relief for anyone in those particular school districts, because they weren't on the 20 mil floor. And again, 335, the initial bill was going to eliminate inside village altogether. We basically, and thanks for everyone from our local government communities around the state for pointing that out, we were able to now change that so that it puts a lid, something like 920, but 920 is a tight lid. This allows for the GDP deflator, inflationary growth in the inside village, so that you won't get a spike. So, property, right now, inside village, property values go 40%, so does the take from that inside village. This will now adjust that going forward to probably like a CPI type thing, so probably about a little bit over 3% a year. So, it allows growth in the inside village, but it kind of avoids those spikes. If I said, oh, what we probably needed to do was somehow look at, and that's going to be a constitutional change, and I'm going to do that, could we lift the lid on 920 so that there's a little bit of growth on those things there, but also put a lid on things like inside village, charter village, 20 mil floor, et cetera? As I always said, if everybody's property taxes were going up 3% to 5% a year, and every governmental entity was getting a 3% to 5% growth in their property tax revenue, I think we'd have a much calmer world right now. So, these are things that we're working on again, you know, the state needs to obviously do something more with the homestead exemption. This was approved by the voters back in 1970, it's a constitutional amendment, says, if you're 65 and older and you're below a certain, or disabled, or certain military veterans with disabilities, those, your value is reduced based on if you have the income eligibility. We need to really get that income eligibility up, and we have two amendments offered by my side on the floor, Representative Brenner from Karma offered something to double the homestead exemption valuation cap from $28,000 to $56,000 to come off of your property tax valuation. That was tabled, I offered amendment on 186 to basically get rid of the 10 and the 2.5% rollback on taxes and replace that with an owner occupied $1,000 tax credit for every owner occupied piece of property, residential property in the state of Ohio and all that. And I was, that was tabled because they said it would cost $1.7 billion. Now, you know, I didn't get a chance to get up and say, what about the $6 billion you cut in income taxes the last three budgets and all that? So, I think, you know, there's a difference, everybody agrees we need property tax reform, I think the difference of opinion, the argument's going to continue, is to, who's going to finance that property tax reform, and who's going to make sure that that property tax reform goes to the people that need it most? Thank you.
I want to thank both State Representative Dan Troy and State Senator Jerry Sereno for being with us today. Our State Representative Jamie Calendar was unable to make it today, he will absolutely loop him in on the conversation, and thank you again, Willoughby Hills, for having us on Facebook, so he can review it if he can. And I know that this is a topic that has to be addressed, obviously, by all of us. I'd like to start to talk about a couple things, and I'm going to do my best to keep, I'll say, politics out of it, and try and focus on the math and collaboration. Mr. Philippiak, since you are right here in the front, I empower you that if I wade into politics, you may give me a tis or a sign, or maybe that could, maybe that could sign. Thank you, Dan Troy. Don't throw anything, please. Like I said, when I started this year, I started sitting down and having conversations with folks, especially that involved around taxing entities. I know I met with Kim Fraser, Elfi over in Deepwood, talked about some of the taxes that they're funding for the social services that go on in our county. I know I had a conversation with Dr. Uhusha, you're here someplace, I sat down with Dr. Leaven, we sat down with Alber.
I'm in the back.
Yeah, good, good, stay there. You know, we sat down with our high educational institutions, and talked about, you know, what is our value proposition to the voters there as it relates to higher education? Once I got into this process, I had a conversation, a wonderful conversation, we brought the superintendents in from across the county, trying to have a kind of big picture discussion. And as I started that, that's when I realized, me, full disclosure, I'm the financial advisor during the day when I'm not being County Commissioner, and budgets is something that I'm very comfortable with, but I need to have a bigger picture of understanding of what's going on. And in some regards, county commissioners don't have their hands in all of these different taxing entities, they don't have opportunities to do some of the taxes, as a county I don't believe can have income tax, correct? But we have sales tax, and we have property taxes. And so, all of these institutions have different abilities and capabilities as part of this, I'll call it tax puzzle, if you will, which is what the spreadsheet is we're going to talk about, but I wanted to get everything on one piece of paper, so that we could, at least I could digest and say, okay, at the top now, this is what the revenues look like coming into this county from all of the various sources. And I realized that it would be a little bit more helpful if we had, instead of one-on-one meetings with everybody, that we could bring everybody together in one room, once again. I'm eternally grateful for all of you taking the time on your afternoon to talk with us. As both of the State Representatives talked about, property tax issues are probably the biggest issue they have facing with Columbus right now. Today is in part about that, but it is not just for that, right? I would love to have this be a continuing dialogue between all of us, so that we can all understand each other's needs and each other's frustrations and challenges as we all serve basically the same, all same citizens across this county, some in different jurisdictions, but for us at the county level, I believe everybody that's here, we all are going to be serving the same folks. Some of the things that are going to come from this conversation, this is related to property taxes, are going to happen to us. We are not going to have our voice in this. We will try, we'll ask the state to consider this and consider that, but at the end of the day, those 132 individuals are going to set policies that then, at least at County Commissioner level, as having explained 1,000 times by Mr. Hackman, I am nothing but a tool of the Ohio Reverse Revised Code. I do not change the ORC, I can only use the tools and do what is allowed by the commissioners within that. So, that's where we have to have a productive working relationship with our folks in the state to say, if somebody wants to put up a bill, oh, sorry, can I get a hold of this one? If somebody wants to put up a bill that eliminates inside village, perhaps that's not a good idea, right? And so, it also, some of these things are going to be done to us, but at the same time, I think we have an opportunity to show leadership statewide. And I have, at times, been critical of some of the leadership that we may or may not be seeing out of Columbus. And I have a lot of times been told, well, why don't we wait? Why don't we wait? Well, why don't we see what's going to happen here? Why don't we see what's going to happen there? And I don't believe that the voters that put me and some of you into office are okay with just waiting. If there's a problem, I view it as our opportunity to try and come up with a solution for that problem. So, that's really part of the objective of why I'm trying to bring everybody in today. And honestly, in my opinion, we have to start to collaborate, sometimes past where our level of comfort is in the past. We are stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, we are providing the services for those taxpayers, and we have an obligation to make sure that we're offering the best value for what is the services that we're providing. I've said it 100 times before, when I talk about collaboration, that is not referral. That is not, oh, here you have a problem, I don't do it, if this organization does, I refer you here. My best way to explain collaboration is, if you have Organization A that's producing 100 widgets and it costs $100, and you have Organization B that's producing 100 widgets and spending $100, I want us to figure out how we can do 200 widgets for $150. Or, in some circumstances, I want us to figure out how we can build 300 widgets for $200, right? I want us to find that ability to provide the same level of services. Any of the conversations I've had with folks in the community, this is not about cutting services. This is not about cutting services. I just want to make sure that we're doing things the best way we can to make sure that we're doing the most efficiently. And I feel that that's what our And I feel that that's what our obligation to the voters is. Sometimes these conversations save $10,000. Sometimes they save a million dollars. I don't know, right? But I think all of us at some point or another in our careers here moving forward are going to have to ask for a tax on the ballot. And I don't know how many of you can say, hey, I know that we are absolutely doing things, absolutely to the peak of efficiency, but there isn't another way that we could collaborate and save a dollar amount, right, in the same circumstance? And if you can't, God bless, please come find me afterwards, right? But I know that there are things that we are working on at the county every day. This is what, they get sick of hearing me. I talk about it all the time. Jason Boy will tell you, I show up every Monday with 10 ideas. Now, they shoot them all down by Tuesday, but this is one of those ideas where hopefully we can push some of these ideas that maybe not be always comfortable, but I do think it's necessary, and I also feel that it's the right thing for us to do. The other thing that was talked about by both, Representative Troy said, and I know Senator Sereno did, was the potential property tax issue that may or may not be on the ballot coming up. I'm not here to talk about the pros and the cons. What I am here to talk about is the fact that I want to make sure voters are educated. I want to make sure voters completely understand what this picture is. And so that's why we went out and built this spreadsheet that we did to try and collaborate and harvest all the numbers, and all of you wonderful folks, so that if and when voters go out to cast their ballot on this issue, they are informed and they know what the actual numbers are in their county. Now, I'm not responsible for the state's information, but I want to make sure that our county has accurate numbers that we put out, that the voters can come to us for that accurate information, and I also want to make sure that everybody in this room has that accurate information. I want to empower you guys so that if you need to have conversations with the public or with your constituents, that you can say, here's the facts, not what you hear on Facebook, not what you may hear on TV ads, but here's the facts of the matter as we weigh this decision. When it comes to the spreadsheet, like I said, I kind of wanted a higher level of looking at the whole big picture, right? Let me give you this flavor. First of all, I am but one voice. As I tell my Perry Rec soccer stu-, it's not, I don't know if stu-, I have players, right? As I coach rec soccer, I have a big voice, but I am just one voice. I do not speak for the county commissioners, okay? So that's disclaimer number one. Disclaimer number two, the information provided to you in that spreadsheet and what's going to go up on our website in January is what was provided from all of you, okay? So, again, we're going to put the spreadsheet up on our website in January. At that time, it is going to have line by line by line by line by line by line by line for everybody, okay? And so if, and I'm not saying Joel DeMar will ever do something like this, no, but if you just kind of put everything into one bucket and you would like to revise those numbers, that maybe what you thought was sales tax maybe is actually an income tax, I don't know, right? What you thought was other funding is actually a special property tax levy, please, 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 reach out to Jason and Zach and Joel to make sure they have the accurate information so that when we put this out in January on the website so that everybody can see and understand what's going on, countywide, that the information is, once again, as accurate as possible. So, let's get into the data, if you will. You should have all picked up, does anybody need one of the agendas that has the spreadsheet on the back? Gloria's spreadsheet, as I said. If you flip the whole thing over, don't look inside yet, we'll talk about that at point number six. If you flip the whole thing over, yes, I know it's small, bud, I apologize. Long story short, countywide, we're looking at approximately just under $1.1 billion in revenues that are coming into all of the 47 entities that are represented in the room today, okay? Whether it be property taxes, whether it be the homestead and the rollbacks, whether it be a sales tax, whether it be income tax, the state funds, and then obviously the state funds, we've broken out with homestead and rollback, as they said, the state pays for those homestead, the current homestead and rollback situation. And then we have federal funds, and then we have other funding, which I assume is fees for services and, you know, other goods like that. All total, about $1.1 billion. If you then look at the bottom, you can see, well, how's the breakdown, we know that. Property taxes are $437 million. Homestead and rollbacks are, we're at around, what, 23, 33? Can't agree any more. 49 is our sales tax. I'm going to say income tax is around 150. The state is around 190 plus what they do on the homestead and rollbacks. And then the federal funding is about 22 billion, and then we have about 200 there. So, when we talk about property taxes, now, let me say this. In addition to this, local taxpayers provide approximately $25 million to Lake Tran as part of their sales tax, okay? So I can tell you right now that before this goes up in January, that'll be included in the sales tax numbers. But we also pay 5.75% in sales tax to the state, which is about, rough math, call it on, 285 to 290 million dollars that we pay in sales tax here that goes down to the state. Also is the income tax that we pay here. The last number that I got from the state was from 2023. We showed approximately $9 billion in income countywide, and we sent approximately $180 million of income tax down to the state. That was in 2023. I do believe the percentages of taxes come down, so I don't, but maybe the income has gone up. I do not have the 2024 final numbers. We will do our best to continue to update this. I say that because if we assume that there's $200 million of income tax going down to the state, plus the 150 that we have locally, that comes up to about $350 million. I say that because if we're sending 285 million or so of sales tax down to the state, plus the 50 we have here, that's 335, plus another 25 for Lake Tran, worth 360. So we're at about 350 in income taxes paid, we're about 360 in sales taxes paid. And then when we look at the property tax, this sheet shows, sorry, 437 million, and I can tell you that the last numbers that Joel and his team provided for me for the 2024 valuation changes, that's now up to $489 million. So when folks say they're frustrated and upset about property taxes, they're not wrong. We are obviously here, at least in this county, even with the fact that we're sending a couple hundred million dollars more down to Columbus that doesn't come back, and I get it, we are what's called one of those donor counties, okay? But even with that, we are still overweighted on property taxes if you wanted to do a third, a third, a third, because even if you want to say we make it even amongst all. And so this, I use it, I view it as a tool. We brought this spreadsheet up. We had it created so that we could try to have higher level conversations and say, you know, what ideas make sense, right? Knowing this, what ideas can we possibly come up with? I will say that there aren't those such things, bad ideas, when it comes to this. A lot of us are elected officials in the room. I get politics. I can assure you that I hope to be the type of elected official that comes up with dumb ideas. Because that means at least I'm coming up with some ideas that I need all of you in the room and the voters to say, yeah, that's not going to work, and here's a why, okay? And I'm not ashamed or afraid to admit that. So I want you to know that I want us to be able to take a role of leadership in this state that says, what can we do to better serve our citizens and taxpayers that potentially want to shift some of this burden off of property into sales and income taxes, okay? Once again, I assume the majority of you are just seeing this for the first time. I don't expect input and ideas now, but I really hope that you do take the time to come back in January. Got a couple of local elections that go on here in November. As the state said, there's a lot that's going to be going on. We hope that some of those things are resolved by Thanksgiving, therefore, we'll be able to digest it over the holidays, come back ready to get to work in January for what else can we do to try and address some of these issues, okay? The next topic I want to talk about are the piggybacks of the owner occupancy and the homestead exemption. That is in the guts. These two provisions were established in the budget that came out. I believe it was, I don't know, the House and Senate finalized it June 30th. I think they have to, governor put some vetoes on it, some things were supposed to be overridden by veto. Law didn't go into effect until September 30th, and the state has given us until October 31st to make a decision. Chuckle, it's fine, I'm a big boy, we signed up for this, that's fine. We're going to do as much due diligence as we can prior to October 31st. We have a meeting on Thursday of this week on October 30th where both of these items will be on the agenda. For taxpayers to get the relief this year, we have to do this by October 31st. So this decision by the commissioners will be in effect for the 2025 taxes, which are going to be collected in 2026. As I understand, the current law, we have to do this every year, or not do it every year. If the ground has shifted drastically over the next eight months, and this doesn't make sense or it does make sense, we have an opportunity, once again, by June 30th, I believe I'm saying this correct? Somebody, yep, give me a thumbs up, thank you. We have an opportunity by June 30th to make that for effect for tax year 2026, which will be collected in 2027, okay? And when we looked at this, I can tell you that across the board, the commissioners understood that about two-thirds of property taxes and about two-thirds of these cuts were going to affect our schools. And I can speak for myself that I'm a very large fan of K-12 public education. And I'll just leave it at that when I say K-12 public education, okay? And so we wanted to make sure, if we did anything, that we had the best information possible prior to making a decision by October 31st. Once again, as Senator Sereno said, they're still making decisions on property tax bills as we speak. And I don't know that the Senate will vote on the two bills that he said by Thursday at 10:00 AM when we have our commissioners meet. And so unfortunately, we may not have all of the information, but we have to make decisions with the best information that we have, or I should say, we have to make the best decisions with the information that we've been provided. Commissioner Regevich and I had the privilege of going down to Columbus a couple of weeks ago, speaking with Representative Troy and other representatives and other state senators, talking about what we have, the great things that we have going on here in Lake County, talking about how we're going to have this meeting, talking about the spreadsheet, talking about what we're trying to do to be as proactive and to show as much leadership as we can on these issues and get in front of these. And in that, in part of those conversations, we came away with a couple of takeaways, that the state house would like to see us using the tools that they had presented to us to address property tax concerns, meaning these two piggybacks. And it went as far as one individual, who in my opinion has the ability to make decisions as it relates to state budget, told us that if counties are not using the tools that we've presented to you, then don't bother applying for the capital bill, which may or may not happen next year depending on how property tax reform is entrusted. Am I lying, yes, sir? Oh. And so that told us that if any of y'all have any interest in going for capital bill requests next year, then we may want to think about adopting these policies for this year, right? And my other concern was then, what happens with the 20 mil floor? And as the state representatives explained, when they do what they do on the 20 mil floor, they have set aside dollars so that the next year or two, where the budgets will not be a drastic, here you go, we're shutting you down, you can tough your funding. They're not going retroactive, and they're going to simply, going forward as they calculate this, kind of hold the schools harmless. And so assuming that that stays in this bill, I would say that I think we are a little bit more comfortable that the schools were not going to have the rug pulled out from under them by anything that's going on in Columbus. And so that has kind of brought us to today, okay? The argument to wait has been presented a lot to us, that we could wait until next year. And once again, I am one voice. We are not making county decisions here today. But the flip side of that is that if we don't do anything by October 31st, then folks aren't going to see any property tax relief in their bills for next year. If we want to show that we are showing leadership and doing something, then unfortunately or fortunately, that has to be bunged on by October 31st. If you look at the spreadsheet, the bottom right-hand number shows that everybody that currently qualifies for the owner occupancy, I assume they can qualify for the owner occupancy, I just think that that's a simple doubling mechanism. With regards to the homestead, you can see that the homestead exemption is around $7.2 million. As I've had explained to me, something like 2.5 is currently qualifying, and like 4.5 or 4.7 are grandfather. Not everybody who is grandfather will requalify for the homestead. Once again, not everybody for the homestead that is grandfather will requalify. If I were a betting man, I would say that the $2.5 million that's currently qualifying is probably going to qualify again. So in my head, take that 6.7 in owner occupancy, add 2.5 at a minimum, puts us a little over $9 million, and then we'll see who actually is qualifying out of the remaining $4 million. With that said, if every single person qualifies, and we are at $14 million in potential tax cuts across all the property tax levies, which are currently, not on this spreadsheet because these are old numbers, but the new ones that have been updated that have not been all collected, is approximately $489 million. So we're talking a potential of $14 million across 489. Percentage-wise, I believe, we're less than 3%, if my math serves correctly. So I don't feel that this is the end solution. I don't feel that this is the only thing that needs to be looked at, but I do feel that, again, my voice, this is something that can be hopefully palatable, that can show the voters and those folks that are upset that we are over-reliant on property taxes, that we are using the tools that we have presented before us, it'll allow us to then go back to the state and say, hey, we heard you loud and clear, and we're wanting to work with you to help find solutions. Here's some of the stuff we're doing here in the county. And by the way, when you look at your capital bill, I want to have a list of all the counties that did this or didn't do this, and I want to make sure that any communication that was portrayed is then accurately played out across the capital bill, if possible, okay? Point number seven on the agenda. Oh, that was the other sad conversation we had. County Commissioners Association is broken up into five regions, northwest, northeast, central. And when we went to our regional meeting, I don't know, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, whatever it was, sometime in October, the they were discussing these topics of the piggybacks. And then somebody asked the question, well, who's considering the piggybacks? Everybody considering the piggybacks. And the question was asked, is anybody talking with their schools or townships or anybody else? And there was multiple counties that actually laughed at that concept. And said, yeah, no, we just, we're doing it. Right? And I apologize about the speed of this. But Commissioner Regevich and Commissioner Plushnik and I felt if there's something that we are going to do that is going to affect your budgets, then we surely better get out in front of you and have conversations as fast as we can. This meeting was originally going to be scheduled for Friday this week, to make it easier for folks' schedules. We bumped it up to today, knowing that if this is going to get done for this year, it has to be done at the October 30th meeting. And so, I, I hope that we can have a productive conversation here where we talked about Q and A, and I'm going to talk about some things I want to hear back from you folks. To understand that none of the three of us take the decision lightly. I was basically appalled that other elected officials had that much disrespect for the, for their fellow decision makers within the community, which has hopefully brought us here to today. Any else? So for number seven, for the questions and answer, a couple of things here, and I'll open it up to all of you, please. First, I would like to say, I would like to, how do I do on keeping it apolitical? Hopefully not too bad, pretty good, thank you. I get that there is a lot of folks that have anger about this issue in the room. If we can please, out of respect for all of each other, try and have a happy, productive tail off, I beg of you. Two, we may not have all the answers as they're continually changing. So, I promise you Joel has a pen and a paper in the back, and we'll be taking down the notes for any questions that we need to get answered and get back to you. Three, I need you folks to tell me what I'm missing. Not me, Commissioner Regevich as well, Commissioner Plushnik, who also had scheduling conflicts and couldn't be here today. But we need to know what it is that we're missing if we were to make these potential cuts. But also, what tools do we need to go back to Columbus and ask for? Okay? If they want to tell us to use the tools they provide us, they're not providing us with ample toolboxes, then we need to go back and have a working, productive conversation and say, well, here's what I need you to do. Example. The, these piggybacks are not going to be funded by the state, and they're not going to be funded by the county. And in fact, the law, I think, leaves it open that you cannot, we have had different legal opinions that we cannot backfill any of these cuts. I started asking questions, and I was told, you cannot give money from the county to the schools, even if I wanted to. Solution that we disagree. All right, well, you can educate me later, and we can educate Mr. Hackman and the prosecutor. One of the ways we could do it is community improvement board. We could create another level of government, and the county commissioners could appoint six people to a board, and city of matter would appoint three people to a board, it's the largest municipality in the county, and then we would give them a pool of money and have them allocate money out to the community. And we may get back together in January and say, hey, this sounds like a pretty good idea. But at this time, I don't know that we were able to implement something like that to even be in place for the schools. And so, let us know what you think would be helpful, what we do or do not have the ability to currently do that might be helpful to move forward. I know Medina County, I've talked to folks in Medina County, they have a sales tax revenue there that's voted out by the people, go straight to the schools to give them money for capital projects. Right? So, there are different ideas out there. I, I hope that either through today or in January that we could sit back down and have a conversation as to what solutions we can come up with. Back to what Senator Serino said about eliminating a property tax and just replacing it by sales and income is just a tax swap, and that's in part true. But I think the opportunity that we as a room full of leaders in this county have is, hey, we heard you. We went out and we, we found $20 million of property taxes that we could eliminate. And then we found $4 million of, you know, cuts and efficiencies, not of services, but of efficiencies, that brought the need down to 16. And maybe then we go to the voters and say, hey, would you like to eliminate $20 million in property taxes and replace it with $10 million of income and $6 million of sales? And I'm making numbers up, and I'm well aware that I have three cameras on me right now, and I'm sure are going to quote me at some point on this. And I don't care. We got to start asking questions, and we've got to start coming up with ideas. We spend close to $500 million in property taxes versus 350 or 350 of the other two taxes. And either it's going to be forced upon us, or we can do our best to try and address some of those issues. And once again, the idea, look at the sheet, there's approximately $1.1 billion coming into this county from those taxes, 430 some, in reality, 489 in property taxes. I'll make this statement, not unclear, we cannot cut $489 million of services or budgets in this county. We cannot, without a drastic reduction in services. We cannot cut almost 40% or higher of the total revenues coming into this county without a drastic reduction in services. Now, I am but a tool of the voter, and if the voter doesn't want those services, then guess what? We don't provide those services. But my hope is that this can give a clear explanation as to the dollars and cents as they're going to make those decisions. Okay? One, I need to know what tools I need to go ask for Columbus for. Two, I need to know if these cuts were implemented. If you look inside the guts, and you, I don't know, cut the homestead in half and added it to the owner occupancy, look at your, look at your entity. And if that dollar amount says, you know, Morris, I got to lay off six police officers if you do this, I need to know. Okay? And two, or finally, sorry, three, four, whatever it is, I just ask that you guys come back in, in January and hopefully be ready to work and to try and put some ideas on paper, and go to the research that we need to do to give voters that option, so. Ken, did you have a question first?
Yeah, I did.
We do not have to do both. Oh, his question was, do we have to do both the owner occupancy and the homestead? We do not. Yes, Mr. Hillier?
Trying to understand your spreadsheet, to make sure I'm comprehending what you're saying. So this homestead and owner occupancy and these numbers that are listed respectively, this is what you're voting, potentially voting on Thursday, and if you vote to approve it, so for my community, if I call it up, it's about 300 grand. That's how much we're going to lose in our next year's operating budget?
If 100% of the homestead folks qualify, which every person I've talked to says that that's not going to happen because about two-thirds of the homestead people who are receiving it now are grandfathered. So, those that are grandfathered have to reapply. And the assumption is, is that most of them or some of them will not qualify. As I understand, the qualifications back in the day were a higher income threshold, that income has been brought down. So the assumption is that folks who currently are grandfathered, no? Okay, what was the, what was the amount of that?
The grandfathering, the grandfathering, since Governor Strickland changed, the homestead exemption was always income eligible. Governor Strickland in 2007 changed that to every senior citizen, 65 or older, got that $25,000 amount locked off their valuation. In 2013, the legislature went back to an income-eligible homestead exemption. But they grandfathered the people who had gotten that between 2007 and 2013. So they're still getting that, you know, and that comes up a lot in Columbus. And I said, you know, I don't know if we could, I said, you know, natural disenrollment is going to take care of that because they had to be 65 years old in 2007 or until 2013. I would say that's, that's not a very big percent. I'd say most of the percentage of the homestead exemption, although that did include anyone in that age group. So, but that's what the grandfathering is. And you're saying under this proposal, that those people who are grandfathered in that six-year window are not going to have, they're not going to get the benefit of the increased homestead exemption for the county limit?
No, what I'm saying was, is that prior to the income restrictions, there was not an income restriction, it was simply an age restriction. And so as you just illustrated, those folks simply being 65 and older that were making half a million dollars a year are still currently grandfathered into the system, they may be needing. But that's my point, is that those folks that qualified then that didn't meet the income are not going to qualify now, but they have to reapply.
So, follow-up.
Yes.
So every year, a senior citizen has to reapply?
No.
Every, is that what you're saying, huh?
No. Once they qualify for this, I assume they're continually qualified, and I assume the homestead now is once you qualify once?
It shows up on your tax bill every year that you get the homestead exemption, you do not have to reapply.
So if somebody makes $30,000 this year and they qualify, yes, Auditor Galloway?
So, the auditor is required annually to send out communication to those who get the homestead. We send out a mailer each January, February-ish, asking them about their income. Because of the law change in 2013, whether or not they, they still meet the new income threshold. Right? So, it is a trust-based system that is, that we send this out, and, and folks are to self-report whether they still qualify. But there is in theory an annual process, if you are qualified one year under the income threshold, maybe the next year suddenly you're making a lot more money and you don't qualify. We've actually had people be honest and send us the mailer back and say, no, I don't qualify for, for next year.
So is it safe to say that the first year they qualify is income verified, after that is the honor system?
The way the state currently runs it, yes. Except, yes, except for those that are grandfathered, they remain grandfathered. Okay? But the, the folks that, since 13, we, we send a mailer saying, has anything changed?
So basically, whatever number appears in that column, unless something were to change, it's going to be pretty close moving on.
It depends, and once again, worst case, that's your worst case scenario, yes.
Generally speaking, okay.
Yes.
The next column, owner occupancy.
Yes.
Is that something new?
What was the owner occupancy credit?
Owner occupancy is a top of the 10% rollback that everyone gets. There's an additional 2.5% rollback if you are the property owner and you occupy that property. So that is, and that's another area which is, I think Chris could tell you, somewhat of an honor system too. I know that Jim Hoops has got a bill into kind of, you know, focus more on making sure that the people who are claiming that actually are occupied that, because there are stories out there about people claiming four or five different properties being their occupied.
Yeah, that's what you think, okay. So the three, I'm starting it up there, Mr. Troy. So the $300,000 that shows, that's already money that the community would not be receiving, it's just the same darn thing, right? That's not a change.
Right now, that $300,000, by the way, we pulled these numbers from the current information we have coming in, that $300,000 is reimbursed by the state. So when they pass the law and say, we're going to put the owner occupancy and we're going to do this homestead, and they said, okay, it's going to cost Tinsville Township $300,000, they cut you a check for $300,000. What they passed this year at the budget makes the county commissioners adopt this policy and offers no backfill from the state, no mechanism of backfill from the county.
So if you approve it on Thursday, we're out $300,000, is that, is that my understanding correct?
Worst case scenario, yes.
Okay.
Still backfilling.
Their portion, state still backfills their portion, yes.
It tends to 2.5% rollback, right? Now, what has happened is, is the number of levies that those rollbacks applied to have been changed. That casing back in 2013 said they only applied to existing levies. So they don't apply the replacement levies, they don't apply to new levies. And so, and then of course, several of those levies were eliminated by the budget, vetoed by the governor, vetoed, overridden in July.
What else? Yes, sir?
For the owner occupied, what benefit would you receive on your personal home?
Me? On my $7,000 tax bill, I will receive a $166 savings.
And what is the valuation of that home?
My home?
Yes.
$509,000.
Okay, so would you argue that is small relief but a big impact to local government?
Absolutely, yeah. Yep, all right. Once again, I wholeheartedly agree, it is very small relief, it's less than 3% of the local property taxes to be paid. But you add all of that up, and in some instances, it's, it's a big meaningful number to some districts, especially on the school district side, yes. Anybody else want to share their home value? Yes. I'm joking.
You said you would put the information that we put on our spreadsheets on your?
Website?
Website.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, do you know that starting in 2025, the PLF, the Tony Library Fund was cut significantly? And therefore, this is really kind of, they didn't give us as much money as they used to give us. And now you want to cut our property taxes, I think this is kind of misleading to the public.
So then, then, thank you for bringing that up. I want this to be a living document, if you will. I want folks to continually update us. And we may get to a point, Joel doesn't want to hear this, but I think I would like to have it so that each line item of the 47 entities, we say, you know, this library district's information is as of 2025 has been updated to reflect, you know, to reflect the cuts since 2024 or 2023. Through the spreadsheet we provided, I think the, on the back, we just listed out the 2024 numbers. You folks were kind enough to give us 23 and 22. But yes, I think it's important to continually be able to update that so that, to that point. And listen, I, I think it's a tool for the library districts to be able to use. Hey, it's right here. All of us used to do this, we would cut this, when we come back to you and are asking for a property text with this, here's the bottom. Right? And so, I want this to be a continually updated document that can hopefully be used by others in the community for, you know, as they try to, however they want to use it, as they try to, you know, do the work for the people. And I will continue to update Columbus when we make our trips down there and say, here's the data in Mike County. Explain to me, explain to me if I'm missing something. What else? Yes?
So I'm going to take Chuck's question just a little finer. I'm struggling with the, what is, the question that the commissioners are being asked to answer by October 31st is whether or not the county is going to replace this owner occupant, or owner occupied piece? Or what is the question you're being asked to answer?
If we are to double the owner occupancy and the homestead exemption, it's called piggyback, right? Especially, it's a doubling. If we are going to double that effective for tax year 2025, we have the ability and the requirement that it has to be done by October 31st. There is no mechanism, and there will be no backfilling of that, of this $14 million. The existing $14 million that is lined up is currently covered by the state. This, no. So that's, it's not, that decision has already been made for us. The question is whether or not we do it for this tax year. The question is whether or not we do it for this tax year.
Oh, all right, I understand.
So for us to do it, once again, for us to do it for this tax year, we have to decide by October 31st. For us to do it for next tax year, we have to do it by June 30th.
So if you approve it, you're just wiping it out. You're wiping out, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna grant the homeowners the double, but there's no backfill from the county, so we're basically short that amount of money, is that correct?
Yes, for the 2025 tax year.
Got it, thank you.
Collected in '26, and then once again.
Delay line up here, so.
What's that?
I'm gonna delay line, but I got it.
I got you, Chuck, I got you. I left my entire evening open for you. Okay? What?
Yeah, that was, that, that mechanism was authorized in the budget bill, House Bill 96, which, as I told people, I never voted against the budget bill of my life, but I voted against this one. Uh, and so, uh, again, it's a classic case of basically, we're going to provide tax relief, but we're going to take it out of the services that that property tax pays. Uh, now, my understanding is that there was also authorization in, in House Bill 335, uh, that county commissioners can increase, uh, their sales tax in order to eliminate the inside millage. And I also got an amendment that allows school districts to do that, to eliminate inside millage and replace it with those state's property tax and all that. Uh, I think, yeah, I, you know, I, I, you know, as a former county commissioner, I would have a problem saying, uh, we are going to tell the people, we're giving them property tax relief, but we're doing it at your expense by taking money that the voters have already authorized for you to get, to do that and all that. I mean, if the commissioners want to give property tax relief, you know, you're still collecting 1.0 inside bills, I reduce it from 2.1 to 1.0, you can give that back, that's another $40 for every taxpayer in the state.
You know what, Representative Troy, you're absolutely right. I appreciate you coming up with those ideas and critiquing how the current county commissioners handle their budget. Thank you, sir. All right. Yes, the, um, the 335 provisions are great ideas. Once again, 489 million dollars in property taxes, 300, mm, what did I say, 60 or 70 million dollars of sales taxes. Total paid, only 50 kept in the county, 75 kept in the county. 350 in income taxes, right? So if we want to lower overall government spending by whatever percentage we are able to do through efficiencies, and then go to the voters and say, would you be willing to forego reducing, would you be willing to reduce property taxes by increasing sales or income? We absolutely have the ability to do that. We do not have the ability to do that by October 31st, unfortunately. This has to be decided by now. Goal is to come back in January, and we can start to come up with some other ideas if need be, that might potentially address some of those options. Yes, sir?
Uh, I wonder, as we're talking about this, pull back to something you said earlier. The risk network that you had mentioned earlier with the fact that, what you heard when you went to Columbus a week or two ago was that not complying risks capital budget. So the rush to do something now is keep the intensity of the county and the state in a better position for those in that position to respect the state's capital dollars. If we were to pass, we're lowering the auditors, taking that off the table, and moving forward as is, and we'd have to fight different things, right? So that's, that's the risk here, risking capital dollars in the state.
So do I honestly think that the state house is going to not give a dollar in the capital bill to counties that do not do this? No. No. Do I think that those counties that try to have a productive working relationship with the leadership in Columbus are going to have a hopeful leg up? I qualify for some of these capital bill dollars if there? Yes. And if not, then whatever the saying goes, do me wrong once, shame on me, or you, or me, or all of us. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yes, sir?
How much are those capital dollars? Did he weigh out the, did he weigh in?
I have no idea, Dan, how much is usually passed in a capital bill? How much?
Well, it depends, most of the capital bills are state facilities, are colleges, are universities, are prisons, uh, different institutions. But usually there's, uh, you know, depending on, on the state of the, the state's debt service, there could be anywhere from half a billion to a billion and a half dollars for community projects. There was a lot more the last capital bill, cause there was still a lot of federal money hanging around through the ARPA money and all that. So I don't know, you know, what it is, but usually it's done to even number here and all that. And, uh, again, I, I, you know, the capital bill is basically, uh, the state taxpayer dollars paying off debt service, cause most of these projects are bonded. We've gotten quite, I know the last time, you know, uh, we got money for the Fine Arts Center, we obviously got money for Lakeland, we got money for, uh, Alliance Working Together, uh, different groups and all that. So, I, you know, I, I don't, I did not make those statements.
No, you did not.
That, that, uh, you either play, this, I mean, this sounds, this sounds like, you know, revisiting something a few years ago, you know, when somebody says to the legislature, here's the ransom note, pay it or we're gonna close the nuclear power plant. And we saw what happened there. And so I just, uh, yeah, I, I don't know if you're, I don't think anything you do on this property tax reform is gonna have, one way or the other. It bothers me that once again, it's the state saying, you want property tax reform? You better do it on the local level. Because if I go back to 2010, the state was putting 1.7 billion dollars of the property tax relief. Fast forward 15 years later, we're only putting 1.8 billion dollars in the property. We've gone from 8% of our general revenue fund budget going to the local property tax relief, down to 4.2%. And again, you know, it's, it's, I, I, I appreciate what you're trying to do here, but I still think, you know, we need to keep putting pressure on the state and say, step up to the plate, quit cutting the damn income tax. We now got the, we got, let me tell you, right now, we are 45th in the country among 50 states in the share of what the state puts into public education. We are 42nd in this country in terms of state tax rates. There's only eight states that have a friendlier tax code than us. But we are eighth in the nation in property taxes. So I think there's a connection there. It's the state basically saying, we're not gonna pick up some of this stuff, you guys figure it out on a local level, and that's, that's what you're into here today. But I certainly am not partying to anything, any extortion that says you must apply with this or you're gonna suffer the capital bill.
And forgive me if I implied that Representative Troy was. Uh, we do agree on the two things though. Um, the school funding needs addressed, and that is a state issue. There's some things we can do here locally. Um, but as a fan of K-12 public education, as I said before, I'm not naive enough to know that, in my opinion, you cannot solve property tax issues without addressing school funding. And school funding at its core is a state issue. Now, I also agree with their, a lot of their policies. When they call property tax reform, it's cutting your budgets and my budget, and saying, is property tax reform figured out? And I can tell you that's how the other offices that I got loud and clear. They think this is a local issue. Now, in some regards, I like that. I already told you, we're a donor county. I promise you, we send more taxpayer dollars down to Columbus than we get back. So if Columbus wants to continue to get out of the business of this, or this, or that, and allow us to come up with those solutions here locally, uh, we're betting, man, I bet that we can come up with those solutions here locally and not spend as much money on, or pay as much money in taxes to do so. Right? So I agree with that. Um, unfortunately, I ran for county commissioner, and I will do my best as worth rich, as we know Commissioner Plushnick will as well, to apply the pressure to the state. But, right, wrong and different, here I am on October 27th, having to make a decision by October 31st. So, yes, sir?
The only reason why we're here is honestly because the state's not doing their job. Okay, according to the constitution, they're supposed to be funding the schools. And again, they put that burden on us and say, we have local control. We wouldn't be here again, having to give homestead exemptions for the seniors, if the state took care of the two-thirds of the seniors' property tax bill, which funds the schools, that would give them two-thirds relief. Matter of fact, the school, or the state should be covering all the schools, which means everybody in this room and all our, basically our residents would be getting a two-thirds property tax relief. I mean, the whole thing is that, again, that's not the way to do it. You know, we don't mind paying for local services. I, Mayor of Timberlake, again, people ask me, how am I gonna provide my police, fire, and EMS if this amendment goes through? Very simple, I'm gonna send my residents an invoice. I just, I'm, I'm not gonna attach it to their home, whereas, again, where if they run into the inability of the page, we seize their home and they figure a way according to state law. So again, this is what we're looking at. We're looking at removing our homes from government seizure so that we're not renters to the government forever. And then we wanna place the funding of the schools where it belongs in the state. Our beloved senator says, okay, he wants to reduce income tax. That's great, which helps out the higher wage earners, but the problem is, that cuts funding from the schools on the state side, cause if the state only generates revenue through income tax and, uh, sales tax, where are they gonna replace that revenue then to fund the schools on their side? You know, everyone asks the questions, well, how are you gonna replace the property tax? Where's the plan? But again, there's, where's the plan to replace the income tax? So.
Excellent points, I appreciate that, cause I'm about to say this. The state is required to pay for a, if somebody goes exact wording, let me know. It's an efficient system or something for common schools. As I said before, I'm a fan of K-12 public education. And I want the highest quality K-12 public education in the county that I represent. And so if you leave the entire school funding system up to the state, my guess is, with our current situation, we're gonna wind up with the lowest common denominator of education. I don't want that, personally. I'll say it right here. That's my philosophy in the league. And so therefore, I appreciate the opportunity to have a local voice in what matters to our school districts here. If we want to have extra programs, if we want to be able to pay for this, if we want to be able to do this, then as I say all the time at the commissioners' meetings, we have this wonderful thing called Election Day. Comes around every, what, second Tuesday after the first Monday, I've been corrected. We have the ability to do that. So it is a complicated conversation and question. I do not want all school funding to come from the state. I just would like to see a fairer system and an honest assessment about what it is we're doing with K-12, K-12 public education, so. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
So I, I think some of the challenges that we have, first of all, you wanted me to call out political, I'm not calling it out of the blue, but the fact that the legislature has given you until the end of this month to do this, puts some political pressure on you guys, which obviously, I'm a little bit of a recognized. It's such, I guess the thing that, that will concern me is that the legislature has not done. So we don't really know what's gonna happen from the rest of the session, whether there's gonna be further tax relief granted at the state level, it's gonna affect our county house in this room, if you were to act on this. And now, you're talking about, especially other issues that, that organizations in this room want to talk and have to deal with. What the commission has recently been more empowered, those decisions will be made in January-ish, probably, December?
Chris, the budget commission review of, um, carryforwards and taxes, that has to be done by June 30th, yes?
Yeah, August.
Has to be done by August. Okay. So.
So your next opportunity is after October, between June, and then decisions by the budget commission will happen later in August. So there's a lot of dynamics that play there that could impact everybody. So I just think that there are a lot of ones to answer. There's a lot of decisions that yet has to play out that, um, probably, if you had the knowledge of what was likely to happen with the place on, have an impact on your decision.
Yes. Unfortunately, I don't.
No, I, I agree with that, but neither does anybody.
Yeah, and, and I am.
We know that there's, there's, there's a lot of motivation to make more changes.
Yeah. I, this, this was a comment. First of all, I have one voice, do not speak for the commissioners. Have I said that? Did all three cameras get that? Um, I honestly, man, I hate, and, and this is, this topic in particular, this is just me, more than a third speaking, I hate the sit-and-wait game. I did not get elected to sit and wait, sit and wait, sit and wait. And while I am trying to have this productive relationship with the state as possible, I certainly am not going to sit and wait to find out what happens in Columbus. And so we're talking about a less than 3% reduction of the current property taxes paid county-wise. I get that that has an impact on your budgets. I am not trying to minimize that. The flip side of that is, is unfortunately, if we wanna do something for 2025, for the bills that are paid in 2026, the only time to do something is right now. Now, you're right, I hope I find out more information about Columbus over the next couple of months. I hope that going into next year, we have a better idea about what the budget commission schedule is going to be. I'm going to ask Auditor Galloway to get that work done as fast as possible. Oh, by the way, he's also gonna have to re-verify a whole bunch of folks that are homestead-qualified right now and are grandfathered in. So he says we have to do that, right? I don't want his job, I don't envy his job. Okay? But I'm going to ask him to do the best that he can to give me an idea of the information I need before going into that June 30th tax budget. Hypothetically speaking, if Columbus all of a sudden cuts $100 million out of your property taxes, I can tell you, I don't really think that we need to do anything on the baby backs if it's gonna be $14 million, okay? If they're gonna do something that drastic and that significant to look at a 10, 20, 30% reduction of what we're talking about here, then, okay, then I'll weigh that decision in that year. These decisions by October 31st are having to deal with the 2025 tax money. The decisions that they're gonna be making over the next couple of months, I assume in that best, this is going to apply to 2026 and beyond, right? So I don't know that they can, maybe they can. They can still make decisions that affect 2025. Um, but once again, unfortunately, trying to make, we are trying to make the best decision we can with the information that we have. What else? Yes, sir?
I, I appreciate you coming to us and sharing it directly and having a conversation with the schools before. Um, just speaking in Madison where I am, our margin for guidance is so narrow. This is, we're gonna have to cut services if they're over any, it's not possible. It's only increasing the reductions we are anticipating. It's just another 3%. So I have respect for your guys' position, it's a difficult situation. Just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you. Out of curiosity, are there any other, sorry, before I get to over there, are there any other school districts that feel they would honestly have to cut services after looking at these numbers? Okay. Yes, sir?
Oh, yeah, thanks again for having us all on here. So just along with the two of us you had, with the, what's the rule you would say? The second being, what would that affect be, assuming, you know, changes that are going to form the 31st, going to affect, if you're saying if you have to cut a certain share, if you have to do X, Y, or Z, what's the recourse and the ability of the county to, once that information is given, what, what potentially we could be doing in advance, provide some answers, potentially? There's no backfill, obviously, but, you know, assuming, uh, entity A, it's like, hey, you know, we'll have to cut two of that B's, or whatever the case may be. We provide that information to the county, what's the county's role to respond to that information or data? If not, in '26, maybe in future years, or planning?
I assure you that anything we take action on, on October 30th, there's a reason why I want to have the date for the next meeting set. This is not a one-time conversation, as far as I'm concerned. And I wanna get together and have uncomfortable conversations that come up with good ideas of what we can do going into next year, right? So once again, I have until June 30th, we, the commissioners have until June 30th, to make any decisions on whether it be inside millage or other property tax levies, et cetera, et cetera. I promise you, those conversations are had every day. Jason Boyd is sick of hearing me coming up with ideas on how we can. Jason Boyd is sick of hearing me coming up with ideas on how we can do things more efficiently, and as I said, figure out a way to make 200 ridges for $150, right? Um, in some circumstances, with some of our property tax levies, we're capped, right? You're not bringing in more than X, and the cost provided, Y, is going up and up and up and up. That's, I mean, that's math. And so, to the extent that we can find as many efficiencies to keep those level of services set up before, we had somebody come into our, um, commissioners' workshop last week, or two weeks ago, I don't remember the last one was, and made the statement somewhat sarcastically, are we that naive to think that Lake County is special? And I responded, I said, yeah, I am that naive to think that this county is special, and I think that it is possible for us to continue the level of services that we are providing. We are different than other counties in our area. I wholeheartedly respect and appreciate the quality of life and, and the level of services that we provide. Auditor Galloway, he spoke before on what first responders and EMT response looks like uh, back in his former home state of Rhode Island, right? So, we have a level of service that we have come accustomed to and we like. This is not about cutting services. It is about being able to look at voters and say, I promise you, there's nothing less to squeeze. We've worked with our neighborhood, we've done this. I was so thankful when I sat down with the superintendent, so we talked about shared services, we talked about this. They all said, yeah, hey, guess what, we already do that. I shared this with that district over there, this one, this one's doing this over here. Great, great, is there anything else we can do? We brought it up in that meeting, Ben, raise your hand. Sorry to call you out, buddy, you got to raise your hand, Ben. That's Ben Capella, Lake County. Do you want to know what Ben Capella, Lake County, does? He operates a countywide busing system. Are there any school districts in the room that could potentially need help with busing? Right? Like, what does that look like? And by the way, I have faith that if Ben looks at the situation and says, yeah, you came up with a great idea to have one countywide department of transportation for our schools, but guess what? It can't happen because of this, this, and this, and because of that, that, and that, then I'm going to say, okay, thank you for doing the good work that the voters expect of us, it's not going to work. Side note, we mentioned that half a dozen times in Columbus, and then, oh, by the way, another state senator happened to put out that idea in one of his bills this week, he's welcome. But, to your, to your question, um, I don't have the answers today of what we could do. I need to know, Madison, correct? If we make this decision, I know that Madison schools are going to have to cut services. If we make this decision, I need to know what's going to happen to Concord Township. I have the utmost faith that Chuck will let me know what's going to happen in Payton Township. That's what we need to know before we're able to make these decisions. Hope that answered the question.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes?
Well, more so, we're going to have to cut 2.2 million dollars for our, but.
If everybody qualifies, yes.
I mean, so yes, we will have to cut.
Yeah.
We're worried about the spending, so we're already trying to make adjustments, so we're just going to stay on the cut. Just to clear, remember we cut.
Okay. Okay. Specific services or, or budget problems?
84% of our budget is staff.
Okay, 75% of the county budget is staffing, and I think 2/3 of the overall budget is the courts and the shares department, so. And the county's qualified well in here. So, I think our number's like $700,000 if everybody qualifies across our county, across our county levies. So, I have, I have other people at the county that look at me cross-eyed even more than normal. Yes, sir?
Of course. I kind of feel like you guys are being, you're having, uh, you're being forced into a timeframe that's unreasonable based without the proper information to make a decision, so I understand where you're at, and it's a tough decision to make. But, you know, even with people I seriously disagree with, and with all the respect to Mr. Troy over there, over the years, we have not been on the same side of issues, but boy, I find myself aligning with, with what he just said before. If we look at what the state has done since the early 2000s and the mid 2000s, they continually make cuts, they, they have rid the tangible personal property tax, the estate tax, the cap tax, um, they've reduced, um, property, or I'm sorry, sale, um, income taxes multiple times, and although it's always really good, but what they've done with each of these is they have not bad filled the local community. So, since I've been elected in 2014, I took office, actually, the year before I took office, um, Payton Township, because Lake schools, um, 90% of our, of our source of, of income comes from property taxes, and I understand property taxes are a burden, but the reason property taxes are a burden is because what the state has done since the early 2000s. So now they've reached the point where, in the example of Payton Township, we had two fire levies, two police levies, and a road levy since 2013, I think it was. Um, and, and why is that the case? Well, because the state has eliminated well over 1.5 million dollars of income that was coming, and that's based upon information from 15 years ago. So they've eliminated all these sources of income, so you go to your residents and you say, if you want this service, this is what it's going to cost you. Well, now, we've all got this huge frickin' property town. I, I moved into my house, um, 2005, I was paying just over $4,000 a year, now I'm well over six, okay? Um, I'm retired, you know? So I get it, we all get it, but it's got, it's driven from the state level, so if you're having a gun put to your head saying, vote on this thing Thursday, because if you don't, this potentially could happen. I think we need to call some damn bluffs, including the clowns who want to put this ballot initiative on the, on the state ballot. Let it go to a vote, let it go to a vote. I just think it's going to lose. When you bring out what's going to happen, you're going to close the schools, for God's sakes, you're going to shut down the police departments, you're going to shut down the fire departments, and you know what? I'm 65 years old, I'm getting myself wound up, but see, if I have a heart attack, I want to make sure the EMT shows up. If, if we vote, if we vote against this damn thing, and, and we eliminate property taxes, okay, great. I think at another meeting I was at, it was talked about commissioner, or, uh, Auditor Galloway stated that if, if you, if the state were to, to vote to abolish property taxes, and I heard Flex pipe on this one too, um, in, in one of these things they had, you're going to raise the sales tax, I think it was projected to be 23, 24 cents additional, and then it was, it was stated, well, yeah, well, then they're just going to go to Pennsylvania, Kentucky, West Virginia, and Indiana to buy their stuff. Okay, well, bring that up now to 40 cents. So, let's call some bluffs here. It's BS, it's ridiculous, and some, some good arguments need to be made on the other side. There's too many good people serving an elected office who are, and I appreciate what you guys are doing, this is not a joke. Thank you very much for being here, stating what you have, but there's too many good people serving an elected office who are letting this, this conversation go crazy. You know, cut my property taxes, I don't want to pay nothing. Okay, clown, well, guess what, you're going to pay the other way.
Focus on me, focus on questions, I appreciate it, sir. First of all.
There's nothing political there.
What's that?
There's nothing political.
Nothing at all, yeah. Yeah, now it's spelled.
That's what I thought, thank you.
First of all, Chuck, you and I agree that there are issues with what is going on in Columbus, okay? I ran for county commissioner. I am not governor. I do not get to dictate to Columbus how they do their job. I can try and work with Columbus on how they do their job. I'm 10 months into the job. This is the first opportunity that I've had to talk to somebody in Columbus that says, we sure would like for you to do this, and this, and this, and we think this is beneficial. Okay, fair enough. I promise you, nobody's putting a gun to my head to do a decision. And I think you and I both know that I do not care about the political pressure from others when it comes to my decision-making process. So let me be clear, the rush and the push into this, yes, is coming because of the law. By the way, the normal timeline to do something is June 30th. They didn't pass the budget until June 30th. The law didn't go into effect until September 30th. They were kind enough to offer us a one month until October 31st to give us the opportunity to put it in place for this year. As I have learned all too often, you try to do something in government, by the time you come up with an idea until it gets implemented, it could be two years late, right? So, for us to be able to do something, the only tools we have, we get a box from Columbus, we got to unpack it and figure out what to do with it. The only opportunity we have is now until October 31st. Why haven't I been out sooner? Why haven't we been out sooner? It's because you think we have been having conversations? You know how many times we've had to consult with the prosecutor's office? What does this mean? What does that mean? Can we do this? Can we do that? Those gentlemen and ladies have to take the time to go research these issues. So, I don't want you to think that the only thing influencing this decision by this week is Columbus saying, you got to do something. I promise you, I do not, and I will never take my instructions from Columbus as to the policies and the things that we do here in this county. But it, but you touch on a point that I think is why this conversation matters, is that, what'd you say, 90% of your revenues come from property taxes?
Right.
Right. In the townships, unless they have a jet, and even that doesn't always apply, they don't have the ability to do any of the other taxes. There's three levers, the way I see it, four if you include services and fees. There's three levers, property, sales, income, and then services for fees. Well, the schools, I don't think can really charge services for the fees, because that's what we're supposed to do, no offense, is provide education to the students, but they have the ability to do property and income. Why not look at income? We're flipping on the ballot this fall, we'll see how that works, right? Once again, I got three cameras on me, and I want to get trashed for proposing an income tax for the schools, so be it. If it's not the right thing to do, tell me, and we won't do that. But we're spending far more money here locally on property taxes than we are sales and income, and so if we can shift that burden and tell the schools, hey, guys, if you could, the townships can only do property taxes. Can we try to potentially look at other sources of revenue, i.e. in income taxes? Then it's going to be on all of us, in my opinion, to go out to the community and saying, we heard you, you want to tax, you want to tax the break on your property taxes, but you still want your quality education here in Lake County, then we need to start to think about an income tax. At county, we can't do income, we can do sales or property. Are there services that potentially we could say, and by the way, I think we're pretty much the only ones in the room that can do sales. So if we want to shift some of that burden to the county, guess what? Lake County, you're right, Lake County can also provide that. But if we want to shift back to your question, okay, if I'm cutting this, what can we potentially do with the county to help out? No? Only two levers I know of, property tax, sales tax revenue. We can't pass an income tax. Sure, charge more for services, you want to pay $500 for your driver's license, and an extra $30, $40, $50 fee on your license plate, we can do that, sure, right? But those are the ideas and the conversations that we need to come up with, to try and look within the room and, and thank you. Nobody's pointing fingers and said, well, I can only do this, they, thank you. That's how this should be, I want this to be a collaborative conversation about, we're all the same, though, I get it, I'm not happy with the state either, but I can either try and work with the state, or I can try and shut them down and take it over myself, and I apologize at this time, I don't think I have that ability. Yes?
So what exactly is the benefit for acting on the state?
Every homeowner and every senior citizen, every homeowner and every senior citizen that qualifies for the homestead will see a reduction in their property taxes paid. About 3% across the board for every, if it's different in each one, it kind of depends. So, but like I said, we have a total of about 400, somebody, Joel, calculator, $14 million divided by 489 million equals what percentage? Please, somebody.
2.86.
2.86, less than 3%. For the individual, it's going to depend specifically to each.
So it's like, how much for $100,000 of homeowners?
I haven't done that, we will have that number, yes. Yeah, Joel, could we try and have a number that says, for every, if we do this on the owner occupancy side, could we have a number by Thursday that says, if your house is worth $100,000, this is what you're going to see in, correct, there's no house, you get my point, for every $100,000? Yes, sir?
Well, I heard one, see, and that's, that was one of the arguments I had on 186, because it could have had a very thin coat of peanut butter in terms of tax relief. I think that the average Willoughby Eastlake taxpayer from that change on 186 was going to get about $2 a month every, so by 24 hours, you're saying 3%. So if, if Chuck's $6,000 tax bill is reduced by 3%, means he's only going to be paying 50, 820 instead of $6,000, he's going to say, uh, you know, salvation has come, uh, you know, I mean, my property taxes have been reduced, I mean, this is, you know, this is not meaningful property tax relief. I mean, what meaningful property tax relief is, what I've said, is the state is putting a couple of billion dollars into relief, going directly to those taxpayers that need it, either through credit, we've got a bill in Ways and Means Committee, and some bipartisan bill that says, if, if you pay more than 5% of your annual income and property taxes, you get the overage tax credit back from the state, or we double the homestead exemption, or we give a $1,000 owner occupancy. There are measures sitting in committee there that just aren't going anywhere, and they're basically saying that the problem with property taxes is all you folks are on the local level, you're sitting with too much money, you're not spending it wisely, and all that, and I think, you know, you got to stand up and say, hold on here, you know, uh, you know, this, so I think that's, that's what I'm saying, you're going to do this, and then people are going to say, well, where the hell is my tax relief? And you're going to say, well, we reduced your taxes 3%. They're going to say, yeah, my valuation went up 25%. So, uh, I mean, I'm just wondering here, what, what, what the impact is going to be here? This is not going to be a significant impact, this is not going to make people say, uh, that finally there's property tax relief for me. I think there are things down the road we need to do, and I've been supportive of that going way back about 15, 20 years. We probably do need to reform some of our local government structures. Uh, we do have 1,309 townships in Ohio, we have 871 municipal corporations, I think we need to look at shared services. I know the school districts have been doing a great job through their ESCs on sharing a lot of those services, so, I mean, it's, it's a combination of things, but I just think that, uh, the average taxpayer is going to say, this is what I got, 3%.
Okay. Is there anything that the state, if any laws or bills the state passes, will not have an impact in 2025?
What's that, 2020, this year? Oh, what do you mean, well, we're in tax year 2024 right now, in 2025.
We're exceeding the taxes.
But you always split it, Chris, are we, you're kind of a year ahead, we're, what tax year are we in right now?
In terms of what we're paying, 24, 25.
Yeah, okay.
So the policies, Chris, that are being put in place now, those have an impact on the 2025 taxes that are being paid in 2026.
Correct.
So there are still changes that they could pass by December 31st and implement it for next year.
The problem with that is, as Representative Troy knows, is that, um, these bills take 90 days to go into effect, they're still having committee hearings, if they don't pass these things until December, your first half tax bills are already going out in January. So there's already legislation that they're looking at where, on some bills where the credits would not go into effect until second half tax bill, which creates its own litany of logistic problems for everybody involved. So there is a, there are a lot of timing problems right now because of the end of the year. I mean, we're, we're, we're rolling the, you know, my office has to submit the abstract uh, on, on Friday to the state. Um, we have to, you know, we have to get ready to roll everything over so that the treasurer can bill in January, so, you know, the clock is ticking in terms of all these different bills and everything. They may pass, they may get signed, maybe some parts of them get vetoed, we don't know, and then, they won't be in effect until February, or the bills will already have gone out in the first half. And this, there are a lot of logistic problems with everything that's going on in Columbus.
Actually, that very issue, I had a testimony last week in Ways and Means, which I'm a ranking member, 186, the representative of the school, or the County Treasurers Association listed 18 different, uh, problems that would be to implement some of this in the middle of a, a tax year, like you said, in July of 2026. So, as I said, it sounds to me like these bills aren't really ready for bribe time yet, and so, uh, uh, yeah, there's, there's just a lot of logistical, I think, you know, we just throw stuff up at the wall and then say, all right, we'll figure out how it actually works later. I, I think we, I agree, we need to spend more time on this stuff, instead of grabbing this stuff.
I am not grabbing anything through. We've been giving you a...
We've been given a timeline to make a decision. I have tried to get the best information possible before that decision is being made. And then what happens? We can readjust, and we can pivot. And once again, I'm not making a decision from one voice, but I am, personally, I'm not a fan of waiting in Columbus. So, yes?
This is more for Chris. In your working group, have you guys discussed closing the LLC loophole at all?
Yeah, we discussed it in the governor's work group, that was a recommendation. Unfortunately, it got watered down because Congressman Teaberry did want, did not want it applied to businesses. So the recommendation was closing the LLC loophole for residential, which is not the problem in their LLC loophole.
I'm just concerned about if we start depending upon earned income for funding some of these things, that that's going to be a factor.
Well, I-
Because it's, it's a-
I will tell you this, I mean, governor's work group aside, the legislature, I'm not aware. Dan, is there currently a bill currently right now to close the LLC loophole? I know the auditors, we want one, but I don't think it's, I don't think there currently is one.
No, there is, I'm working with some other people getting something drafted out, the LLC loopholes, which is, and then also working, and I've talked to Chair Omer about re-instituting the Tax Expenditure Council. So we start looking at the billions of dollars of property in the state, they're exempt from paying property taxes. There, there's just a, you know, there's just a lot of, you know, effort, I think, that has to be done on many fronts. This is what, there's not one particular bill that solves this particular problem. But yeah, the LLC loopholes is, is a problem. Out-of-state people coming and buying a heck of a lot of property, it's showing up. And because they're not required to, to file a transfer motion, a lot of times, auditors don't even know what the actual value of those properties are. So, and again, as always said, the best form of taxation is have as broad a base as possible, because that keeps the rate lower. If you've got a whole bunch of holes cut on the base, that means the rate's going to go up for everybody else.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Obviously, I'm thinking back on like Madison matter, I'm something in the city. It would affect me, reason whatsoever, if that's him. I would say almost every councilor in this room is deficit spending right now. The trouble may be more or two.
So one or seven or eight are, there's nine school districts, I believe. Seven or eight are deficit spending, spending down their reserves. Yes?
Upper Riverside, does this one put up into deficit spending?
So pushing into deficit spending. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes? I haven't heard of anything, I think our-
What was the question?
Is the state talking about any of the demands on the cities or municipalities or townships such as Next Gen 911? That's obviously going to be an increased cost to municipalities. Is there any talk of any of that? I don't know of any, and you?
No, I think the plan there was to have that funded through surcharges.
Sign up one call.
That's always a big, I can't believe how we argue over, well, 50 cents is too high, let's just charge 36 cents a month.
A lot of people in the room, and the answer is no, that I don't. Anyone else?
But in terms of, you know, you mentioned man, you know, and I brought this, what if, we had somebody in Ways and Means say, well, what do you school, what can you schools do to reduce costs so that you can become more efficient? So I asked the witness, what, what school district was, I says, how much are you spending out of your budget to transport non-public, non-students in your school district to their, their private school locations? And they, she said over $300,000 a year. So I turned to the member, I says, well, there's one mandate, maybe we can take away and help the school district save some money. Because, I mean, that is, that's one thing, you know, our bus, our bus replacement money has, has really dwindled to what it used to be with public school district. And now they are required by law, or they will be required, to use part of their foundation for it if they don't get these private school students to school on time with their transportation system. That's what needs to happen.
So once again, it's one of the ideas and conversations that I hope that the folks in the room are willing to continue to engage us in the conversation of what can we, as elected officials that want to go down and talk with the folks in Columbus and try and have a cooperative dialogue. If they hear coming from more than one, or two, or three, or four entities, then hopefully we can actually try and get some things done in this regard. So, once again, I appreciate everybody being here today. I appreciate your honesty, I appreciate the work that you do. And I appreciate the idea of trying to have us work together. But I want to let Commissioner Regevich have the last word, please, Mr. Charlie.
The last thing I want to be. I just want to thank everybody for coming today. This is what makes Lake County special, is we can get in a room of elected officials and officials throughout the county to have these kind of conversations. We've seen it happen before with local government funds and many other things that we do here in Lake County. So I appreciate the fact that we're all here and here we're able to do. Again, we've heard, the reason why we're here, we've heard many taxpayers, clubs, they want property tax relief. Auditor Galloway, Commissioner Regevich have sat on the floor of revision, heard story after story about story of seniors maybe losing their houses and unfixing them. So this is but one tool that the state allows us to have. Again, we just unpack it's for the box and see how it's going for our county is our job. I don't get to make policy. Commissioner Regevich doesn't get to make policy, although I think he actually did. But when he says he has 10 ideas every week, I bet it's more than that, Jason. That's probably per day and each week. But we are working feverishly on this topic every day. What can we, what else can we do different? I'm sure Dave Hackenar, from our auditor's office, is probably exhausted from, go see if we can do this, go see if we can do that, and then get back to us. So this is an ongoing conversation, as Commissioner Regevich has said. Your input's important, but the underlying end is, we've heard the taxpayers and the people that have put us here, that they want property tax relief. So this is why we're considering it. I personally, I don't make decisions for the board, but I personally wasn't comfortable doing that without having a meeting like this, having as many conversations as we could to get the word out there and see if it's effective. So, again, thank you for coming. See you in January. If you want to call or email, we'll get you in the right time, so, thank you.